All right, Joe tells me at six o'clock. So I want to call us to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer-C2, and WRHI. Welcome, everybody, to our room. Hopefully, you can still see us up here, a little bit different technology than we're used to. As I, as we join for a moment of silence, I'd ask everybody to please keep those affected in multiple parts of the United States by the recent hurricane. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We, this is out of order, but our next item is supposed to be the approval of the agenda. You've all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No, ma'am.
All right. Well, then, we are going to jump into some exciting things. We've got some special recognition for folks that have been with this district for 25 or 30 years. That is amazing, so looking forward to seeing you all.
Joe, can you come here?
Okay. Are you on? Are you green?
I promise I don't say anything inappropriate. Just a few words about these folks before we honor them. The teacher shortage has struck every district and it's even impacted Fort Mill. We still are not having trouble hiring teachers and getting pools, but it's less kids are going into school of ed than they did 25 years ago for various reasons, pay and all kinds of reasons. In Fort Mill, we're fortunate to have people who have been here as long as they have. This is the secret, I believe, is our, our people, our secret sauce, as Christie likes to say, our staff. These are servant leaders who care about children and love children, and they got into it for children, got into this work. God's work is what they're doing. So, so pleased to work beside these folks, and it's unusual to have 20, as many 25 and 30-year folks as we do, but we're going to honor them tonight. And I'll turn it over to Yvonne.
Hello. As I call your name, if you want to come up front over to Gray Young, and he'll present the awards. We'll start with the 25-year awards. Amy Bartholomew.
You may want to lift your mic up just a teeny bit.
The mic.
Darren Siatoli. Jody Davenport.
Woo-hoo!
Same party as in bed.
Lisa DeVorsak. Libby Freeman. Michelle Gamble. Dana Gibson. Nicole Gossett.
Woo-hoo!
Samantha Kirkley. Sarah Lanford. Tamara Nally. Bonnie Sandy. Sharon Shaw. Amber Smith. Shelley Thompson. Jamie White. Heather Wolf. Jocelyn Young. Yes. Just want to show you the award for 25 years is a clock with grave 25 years. And for our 30 years coming up, they're receiving a couple.
Nice job, Bana.
From Tiffany. So we'll start with the 30-year award. Nina Hudson. Robbie Sluter.
That's right.
Heidi Wilkie. And that's all the awards.
You know, these awards make, have started making me feel really old because it used to be former teachers of mine, but I've been out longer than 25 or 30 years now. So I'm like, oh, geez. So we get to keep the excitement rolling. Our next item of our agenda is the Forest Creek Middle School Forest School Spotlight. So Christine McNeil, come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
I guess I could take this off now. It's warm, it's warm. Thank goodness, we don't have to do that anymore. My name is Christine McNeil, and I'm the proud principal of Forest Creek Middle School. I have with me George Latzos, who is our lead teacher and incredible in the position that he serves. Tonight, we're excited to share with you a story about Forest Creek Middle School. We'll start our story with a visual that will walk you through the themes that have shaped who we are, looking at our school climate and achievement.
Every great story begins with a dream, and in 2021, that dream came to life when Forest Creek Middle School was born in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Cue the epic music. Okay, more like a quiet, reflective tune as we entered our pristine halls with hope in our eyes, fresh paint in the air, and a naive optimism that could only mean one thing: We were ready to conquer the world. With shiny new floors, motivated staff, and a group of students who were probably more excited to see their friends than to crack open textbooks, we were off to a fantastic start for a little over a week. And then, because no good story is without conflict.
Right.
Our entire school went into quarantine. That's right, just a few days after opening our doors, we had to shut them. Welcome to FCMS, home of the brave and e-learning fatigue.
Forest Creek Middle in Fort Mill is closed. Every student now learning online for the next two weeks thanks to COVID cases within the school.
But even from home, we held on to our growth mindset. Some days, growth meant academic achievement. Other days, it meant simply finding the unmute button. As any middle school will tell you, excellence isn't something you're handed, it's earned. And after our quarantine adventure, we were committed to earning it. When we finally returned to the building, we went all in, teachers, students, staff, parents, even the school mascot probably would have pitched in if we let him. We adapted, we learned new strategies, and most importantly, we learned that there is no problem a gallon of coffee can't fix.
True.
It wasn't just about academics. We needed to connect with each other, with our teachers, and on a really good day, with our bedazzling skills. Slowly, though, the connections deepened. We bonded over class projects, new friendships, and the occasional dance party that caught everyone off guard. We became more than just a school. We became a community built on trust and laughter. With every great story comes victory, and ours came in the form of academic success and unforgettable memories. We celebrated the little wins, like being recognized for our talents, and the big wins, like academic honors and school-wide achievements. Success is all about teamwork. Whether it's acing the test or successfully navigating the world of opening a new school, we did it together. Now, as we look to the future, we know one thing: The story of Forest Creek Middle School is just getting started. Our focus on growth, commitment to excellence, and meaningful connections have laid the foundation for all that comes next. There are new adventures and new challenges ahead. Forest Creek Middle School, where we grow, laugh, and, most importantly, succeed together.
As our visual story shared, at Forest Creek Middle School, we focus on a growth mindset, commit to excellence, make meaningful connections, and succeed together. By the end of this presentation, you will be able to identify the key themes that have shaped our story and understand how these themes have contributed to the success of our students and our staff. So let's take a look at where Forest Creek came from and how we've grown into the school that we are today. In our first year, we embraced the theme "Everything is Figure-Outable." This theme carried us through the challenges of opening during the global pandemic. We faced uncertainty, but through resilience and teamwork, we overcame obstacles. Our staff committed to excellence and innovation. We built systems, we changed those systems, rebuilt them again, we problem-solved on the fly, and we created a school culture that was deeply rooted in meaningful connections. Dr. James Corner, a Yale University child psychologist and school program designer, said, "No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship." Building meaningful connections between students, staff, families, parents, and community was at the core of what we wanted to establish our first year. Moving into our second year, we took it up a notch with our Level Up theme. It was about refining what we had started. We raised expectations in every area, from increasing classroom rigor to setting high standards for ourselves and for our students. Collaboration became even stronger as we shared ideas and learned from each other. We pushed each other to achieve our very best, and to do that, we created an distraction-free school zone, we fostered student independence through our PAC check, and we embraced our stop, drop, and read practice and embedded it into our daily practice. Lastly, we leveled up our systems of two websites and processes: This Week at the Creek and our Parent University. At the bottom of these charts, I hope you have a link to these presentations, you'll see data that we've embedded from our school improvement plan, and you'll see from year one to year two. And when we started going into an opening in year 2020, as you know, we had students coming to us from our five sister schools. So our baseline data was based on averages from those schools. So our year one data is here, our year two data is here, and year three, as you know, we're waiting for some more information. Speaking of year three, year three brought us to our founding year, probably the most important year so far. Whatever It Takes and Embracing the Coyote Way. It was a theme that we embraced that let us know that no matter what, we knew every child needed or would get what they needed to learn and succeed at high levels. We focused on learning and growth, we established consistent behavioral expectations, and we worked on strengthening our PLC process by providing tier-one support to all of our staff. But to make all of those things happen, we had to have a math specialist and a lead teacher. So thank you for providing those positions last year. Mr. Latzos, our lead teacher, is going to share with you some more information about how embedding the theme "Whatever It Takes" has impacted our school.
Now we get to look at the fun stuff. All right, so I'm not gonna, I'll spare you the time and not go too far into depth with this, but this is our last year's SC Ready and EOC scores, and actually, this is all three past years. So starting from April of '22, our '23, April, and '24, just last year. At the top in orange, you've got the Algebra EOC, meets succeeds, and then our reading, and then our math below that. And so you can kind of see the trends going across from left to right. We've had a few dips, however. Our Algebra EOC rose to the highest it's ever been this, this past year, 97% overall meets succeeds. Our reading is stable, we grew a tenth of a point, that's okay, but we're, we're stable. And then our math made some huge gains and jumped up to 70% overall for meets succeeds, which is also our highest so far to date. And so that kind of sets us up for where we are now, year four, pursue greatness. And so with that, we'll look at our, our STAR history. Our STAR data is our universal screener test that we give at the middle school level to kind of determine what the health of our overall academic performance is throughout the year, three times a year, the fall, winter, and spring. At the top in blue, we've got our reading meets and succeeds, and then in green, the roller coaster, you've got math. We'll look at the blue line at the top first, the reading, and we're pretty stable overall across all the years that we've done this. But the key point, and I don't have a laser pointer here, but if you would look or try to kind of trace your eyes, following up October 23 of last year, all the way up to that blue point there, from there is where we started our Whatever It Takes year. And so after that, we've climbed up to above the 75% threshold and even higher beyond that in the spring, finishing the highest we've ever finished before. Now, although it looks like we have a drop this year at the October 24 point there, that is the highest we've ever started a school year for reading when it comes to that STAR assessment. There is one point back in April of '22, but that's a 75, and it's currently a 75.1. So it is higher. When we look at our math, it's a little bit more of an up and down, however, there is a pattern there. So the pattern starts where we've got fall to winter and then a sharp drop in the spring of about four points at first. Then we go fall, winter, sharp drop about seven points in '23. But then last year, again, that pivotal year where we did whatever it takes, starting October 23, we climbed in the winter, we had a slight drop, just a one, one-point drop there, which is a win for us because it's stability. And then from there, starting off this year in the fall, October 2024, we are starting at the highest we've ever started in math as well. So what this tells us is that this year, we are poised and ready for progress even further than we were in the previous year. A little bit further, also, we've got for the first time ever in our FCMS history, we have students of each subgroup performing above our STAR school goal. And so here is the math layout. And so for the first time, you can see there, October 2024, they have crossed over, every single group has crossed over above that 58% math school goal. And then also for our reading, same thing, this fall is the first time we've ever had every subgroup crossover. So we are poised and prepared and ready this year, more than any year, to pursue greatness and, and continue to learn and continue to achieve. I'm going to pass it back over to Ms. McNeil so she can take us out.
So looking into this year on pursuing greatness, we want to make sure that we are striving to build opportunities for ongoing success and thinking. So this year, we know that students buy in if they can see their results and they know where they want to go, they, they know the path. So we started with data conversations. So students got to look at their STAR reports, they got to look at their strengths, they got to look at their percentiles, how they compared nationally, and they got to see exactly how they were going to grow and what they needed to do that with, or what they needed to do to grow. And then we actually finally began what was, has been on our school improvement plan since year one, and that is looking at question three and four of the PLC process. What are we going to do if they already know it? And what are we going to do to extend, well, to extend that learning? And what are we going to do to reteach them that material? So we've got enrichment and intervention, which is our boost time. Thank you, Mr. Latzos. So building opportunities. We also continued our efforts with our bridge class. This year, the tier-two students, or students who are receiving tier-two intervention in elementary school, we have our literacy specialist who is working with those students in the sixth grade, starting at nine weeks at a time, and monitoring and adjusting as needed and working with those students, continuing tier-two intervention. And lastly, we've established our guiding coalition, which will lead the path as we continue our journey at Forest Creek Middle School.
Creek Middle School, we focus on our growth mindset, commit to excellence, make meaningful connections, and succeed together.
What you can see there is that, kids say it best, that our future is bright. By focusing on those things, we are in alignment with the Fort Mill Four, the mission and the values. All means all. You saw our subgroups, every subgroup at Forest Creek Middle School has started this school year above the line, and we know that we want to push them to their greatest potential. So we are in alignment with the Fort Mill Four. We appreciate all of your support. We're excited to see you next week, I believe it is, at Forest Creek Middle School, where you'll get to visit some of our sixth-grade classes and see these themes in action. Thank you.
Thank you. I had almost forgotten the fun of them opening school and then canceling for two weeks. Yes.
Yeah, twice a year, man.
That's right, they remembered, yes, they did, they had not forgotten. Okay, not nearly as exciting, but we do need to approve minutes from September 4th. You all receive those. Were any, any adjustments or corrections?
No, ma'am.
All right, those will stand approved with unanimous consent. What about September 17th, adjustments or corrections?
Ma'am.
Also approved with unanimous consent. Do we have any public participation? We do not. Okay, then we are going to jump into several staff reports, starting with the financial report with Ms. Lordeau.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, you have the monthly financial report for August 31st. The key information about this, it's the first full month of the full payroll. Teacher pay runs August through June, so this starts giving us a true idea of what our monthly expenditures are going to be based on the budget that you approved last spring. But total revenue to date is $21,119,629. Total expenditures, $25,837,612. So as expected, we are in a month where we are using fund balance for cash flow. $4,717,000 of fund balance was used. I reported to you last month that we had a record number of vehicle tax collections. We exceeded $2 million. Tonight, I'm telling you, we've now had the second month of vehicle tax collections over $2 million. So it was $2,096,127 of vehicle property tax collections. So this may be our new average.
Have we started the process where we remind parents if they have moved here and have not registered yet?
Correct. We are still, I don't believe we have sent, we're pulling the data, and then we will start the process of sending the notices with the information, how to register your vehicle in York County. Then they will have 30 to 45 days to do that. But yes, we will be doing that process this fall as well.
So the number is likely to even go up.
Correct, correct. You have in your packet our new improved colorful financial statement report, along with our prior, I call it the old boring, just numbers report. But a couple of things I'll highlight, and once again, I'd like to say thanks to our very own technology department, Jonathan Bradstreet's working with me on this every month. We're continuing to improve it, so if you have any suggestions, please let us know. But one key, a couple of key things on the new reporting format. When you look at the revenue, we're prioritizing the boxes across the top as from greatest to the least amount of money. So we're in a period right now where state revenue is exceeding local revenue because we're not in tax season, what I call tax season. But later on, you will see us switch those when we get into the months of tax collections. But because state revenue is evenly distributed now under the new education funding formula, we receive 1/12th a month. Also, on the expenditures, we are doing the same, but as expected now, salaries is the highest expenditure and will be every month going forward. One thing I will point out, if you look at the, the pie chart- One thing I will point out, if you look at the pie chart for salaries, we budgeted at 88% to 90%, we're at 78.3. There are a lot of our contracts that are paid in June for purchased services, as well as all of our budgeted transfers to any special revenue fund or any school pupil activity fund. We record all of those in July. So, that's making our percentage on salaries and benefits a little less. Right now, we're only two months into the new fiscal year. So, wanted to point out those two items. Any other questions on the August financials?
I have one. Talk to me about the cadence of federal revenue, so back on that page where it's zero.
Right, so for the general fund, our larger federal revenue categories such as IDEA, Title I, that is not reflected in the general fund. Those will start coming in later this fall, but as far as general fund, the only federal revenue that's budgeted is for the junior ROTC program. And that normally will come in quarterly.
Okay.
So, we have not started receiving any of that piece of budgeted general fund federal revenue.
But things like IDEA will never show up on that particular chart.
They will never show up in this box, because this will be the general fund only, what's under the $234 million budget.
Ms. Lourde, I'd like to compliment the format. I really liked it.
Great.
A lot better.
I will share.
A hell lot better.
Yes.
I sent a text message saying, "It's pretty, but it's gonna take me a minute," and you're over here going, "Oh, it's wonderful."
Works for me. The colors do it.
Well, we'll continue to work on any improvements or ideas that you may have to enhance that.
And did I understand you correctly? We pay teachers' salaries on 11 months, not 12 months?
We pay them on 12 months, but their new contract starts in August. So, they actually receive their pay August through July, but July gets recorded back to June for their 12th check.
Okay.
So, what you saw reflected in the July expenditures were only the 240-day employees. And August is the first month that we get the true average of what the monthly expenditures for salary and benefits is gonna be under the new budget. I'm gonna move on to impact fees. Total collected to date, we are now in excess of $69 million. So, $69,198,180 have been collected in impact fees. Out of those funds, we have now requested $35.1 million towards the construction of Flint Hill Elementary School, as well as $1.2 million towards Flint Hill Middle School to date. And this week, we are paying another over $3 million pay app, so we'll be requesting another $3 million by the end of this week out of these funds. So, we're actively drawing down these funds as we are making payment on construction costs for those two schools. Single-family units to date, we have had 2,700 single-family units permitted and 1,600 multifamily, for a total of 4,379. As we have expected, our single-family comparable data for 12 months rolling is about 32% more this year than 12 months prior. As you've seen on the monthly reports, we are still not seeing a lot of new apartments, so we are less on apartment complexes. But overall, our September collections were $690,000. And that's compared to last year's average monthly of 597. So, in August, we exceeded last year's monthly average. So, we are starting to see the pickup with impact fees and the permits issued at the county level. Speaking of the county, I'm probably the only one in the room who got excited to go to my mailbox this weekend and get my property tax bill on my home. I actually called the York County Auditor today and said, "Wow, you are early this year, thank you so much." And he said, "Yes, they were about three weeks early this year." Normally, the bills go out around the third week of October. He said it was a seamless process, everything went well with their system, and they were able to go ahead and get the property tax bills out. So, I'm excited about that. The due dates didn't change, so we'll see, we'll see when those get paid by all of us. We are in process of the year-end audit with Green, Finn, and Colley. They have almost finished fieldwork and are in the stage of drafting our audit report. Just as a reminder, that'll be issued to the State Department by December 1st. And then the last thing I want to mention is, last week, we held a very successful PTO-PTA Booster Club training meeting. We held that during an extended lunchtime this year to try to get those that could not come after work because of other commitments with their families in past years. We had a very good turnout. All the schools were represented, and we had Kim Wickersham, who's the Director of the South Carolina Public Charities Division as our speaker, and she talked about all the filings required with the Public Charities Office, as well as the IRS. And she got into an interesting conversation with questions about holding raffles. So, I hope it was very helpful for those that attended. We did video her presentation, and we will make that available for those officers who could not attend also. Any questions?
Can I ask you one question back? The 30 mils that York County collects for taxes that we are a...
County-wide millage.
Yes, county-wide millage. I remember you talking at some point about not knowing for sure what our percent was gonna be, but we figured it would be going up. Have you settled that yet?
Correct. So, our percent, based on the 135th day, did go up. We're the largest district in York County, as we expected. So, our percent went up slightly, and that percent will now be used throughout this year for distribution of those monthly tax collections until we get to the 135th day in the spring.
Okay.
And then it will be reallocated and reconciled to the most current numbers. But I can bring the exact percentage, but it was as we expected with the increase, yes.
Ms. Lourde, you mentioned that we were using some of the, we took our, was this our very first draw for Flint Hill Middle?
No, we have been drawing since we started construction.
Okay. How much have we...
I believe we have drawn about seven times.
Okay. Do you know how much we've drawn for that school?
For Flint Hill...
Middle.
Middle?
Yeah.
Flint Hill Middle, we have drawn $1,201,893.
Cool. Thank you. So, in the bond, did we take into consideration that?
In the bond, when the referendum committee presented it to the community, we presented it with worst-case scenario as full construction cost, not knowing what could potentially come in in impact fees towards this. We have only issued a small amount of debt towards that middle school on purpose. We will take that and issue it in much smaller increments than we normally would under construction of a school, so that as we're collecting impact fees, we would not be issuing that piece of the debt that was approved.
Got it. Thank you.
Does that make sense? The total amount's approved, but that, we will not draw the full amount for that middle school.
Which ultimately makes a tax savings for all of us in the public.
Yes.
And we, I think, have already recognized that the amount collected to date is sufficient for the elementary, and so, anything that continues to come in from whatever point, we cross that line until...
Is now allocated towards the middle school.
Is now, is extra funds that will be available towards the middle school.
Correct. So, none of us are paying any taxes on this middle school, on those tax bills that we just got.
So, we won't levy the full $204 million at the end of the day.
Correct.
All right.
We're being very careful about, before we issue any debt, we will work through this process during the full construction time period on the debt issuances.
I do think that would be important to know, what you just said, Dr. Epps, that the full $204 million will not be...
Will be needed.
Yep.
Yes. But we felt like, at the time that we were relaying this information to the community, it was important to share the full cost of construction for that school site.
Because we didn't, and we still technically don't know what that amount will be...
Correct.
You know, as time goes on.
Yeah. Thank you for the question.
Anything else, Ms. Lourde?
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I believe we're gonna bring Mr. Burke up to talk to us about some logos, and colors, and graphics, and things like that.
Good evening. A little bit further walk tonight than it usually is, so... Yes, actually, tonight, we are gonna be unveiling the graphic creations of the mascots and logos for both schools. We obviously have previously approved the mascots and the colors, so tonight, it is just about the visual. We get a chance to show you guys what we were able to create with the artists and be able to put together for both schools. I think y'all are gonna really love these. We're gonna go through each one individually. Just as a little reminder, first and foremost, we're gonna talk about Flint Hill Elementary School. Their mascot is the Cubs, and again, in this version, that is what a fox cub, or a fox youngling is called, is a cub, so we're not talking bears or any other cubs. So, we are talking Fox Cubs. Their colors are, we ended up working with our artists to pick very specific color tones that would work well on the web, as well as paint, and any other function needed to be used. So, we settled on brick red, black, and then the, not alternative, but the extra colors are gonna be white and the light gray. That being said, here is Flint Hill Elementary Cubs.
So precious, I love them.
So, each school gets a full package. They are going to have a primary mark, which is the one in the upper left, and then the secondary mark, which has the mascot included, the name of the mascot included, and then we're able to break those out into individual pieces as well, too, where they can use the full cub body, just the head, or just the letters of the school. So, the fonts and everything are all set for these. You'll notice the TMs, these are trademarked designs, so we think this is really cool. We will also have a style guide that will go to the schools, that will teach them and show them how to properly use their logos and in what fashion. Sorry, what fashion. They should do that depending on the colors that they're putting it on. It also even includes, if you're gonna go single color, which we have all those files will be provided to the school once it's ready, to show them how and when to use those as well, too. So, very, very happy with this one, thought it was really a fun one. You think in elementary school, you want something that represents the fox, but you want it also to be cute and cuddly for the kids, too. So, we think this fits very well. Contrasting that is the middle school. Obviously, now you're introducing school sports and things like that. So, we went a little bit different direction with their mascot, you'll see in a second, but as a reminder, they are the Red Foxes. In this particular case, we went with Cardinal red, black, and white as their colors, and their mascot looks like this. So, we have, again, the primary marks. The primaries up on the left, and then the secondary marks from there. This particular mascot, we don't have anything in the district that kind of has this type of positioning. We thought this was a very unique positioning, where it kind of looked like it's coming out at you. Again, it's not overly aggressive, but it fits that middle school level of, you know, this would look great on the side of a helmet or on a t-shirt for a program. So, very happy with this one. Obviously, letters are a little bit sharper, a little less childish for the middle school, and stacked a little differently. And then, again, they'll also get their brand guide that kind of shows them how to use these logos on different colors and different settings, again, with the back and forth. So, we're very, very happy with these. These are gonna be, like I said, gonna be shared throughout the district, and once the principals are named, the schools are ready to go. I know I've already worked very closely with Mr. Raminate to get him files for things to go into flooring and all that good stuff. But anybody wants a closer look, either later on in the meeting or after, we have two of these boards set up. You can take a look at it later tonight. There's also one out in the lobby that you can come up and check out. Now, having said that, we do have a little bit of a surprise this evening. Each one of you, in front of you, has a black box with a bow on the front of it. If this time, if you would, please open it up. Nothing is going to pop out at you, I promise. There were recommendations for that, but I stayed those. So, you are now officially the first members of the Cubs.
We're the first Cubs! Yay!
So, this was a great way to show you guys how these logos can be used, and of course, you know, as our board and work to help get the funding for this, for the impact fees. We thought you guys would get the first official membership into the Cubs pack.
I was literally just thinking, "This would look really good on a hat."
It does.
There you go.
I may or may not have snagged an extra as they came in.
Purely out of curiosity, what is, and you may not know this, and I should have probably asked you ahead of time, what is the red that we use at Nation Ford High School?
Not 100% on that, but it's neither of these two shades. I can tell you.
But it's fairly close, I thought, to that Cardinal red.
It is a little closer to the Cardinal red. It has a little bit different vibrance to it. It's not quite as, you know, kind of light red as the Cubs side, and of course, it is also hard to tell a little bit on the screen. You can see a little bit better on the poster board, the true difference in those two reds. But yeah, it's not exactly the Naffo red.
I thought it was more of a traditional red.
It's actually more of the traditional, the red that's in the D right there.
Like a just a red-red, whatever that means. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
All right. When do they get a name?
When does what get a name?
That's why I asked.
I have heard of unofficial names floating around.
His name is Cash the Cub, because we're paying cash for this school. He is Cash the Cub.
He's named. That's exactly what I asked.
I'm sure I can be impressive on the person once they're in our school as well, too.
That's his name. All right, fair enough. All right.
Thank you.
Our next item is a construction update for the schools.
It is. And actually, as we transition over to that, I did wanna take a moment, we wanted to share some information that we have, and wanted to take a moment to also address some of the safety concerns regarding the sites at the schools. So, wanted to give you guys a little update on that first, before I turn it over to Mr. Britton for his section. First and foremost, the district has now made aware of several legal proceedings that are currently underway that, you know, could impact the outcome of what happens at this future site. You know, however, we are acting under the information that we currently have received, I apologize, however, we're acting underneath the information we receive, and according to our state and federal regulatory agencies that, you know, govern the community health and safety of our community, the SIOFAB site will have to be and be required to meet all health and safety standards before they're able to conduct business there, and after they conduct business, and these same regulatory agencies will establish, that have established the standards, will monitor for compliance to ensure that there is minimal to no risk to our community. Now, having said that, emergency planning is a routine practice for all school districts across the state. That is something we are very used to. We are currently awaiting the finalized emergency response plans from York County. Now, those have to be approved by the EPA before they are sent to York County. But once they are approved and are submitted to the county, then the school district can begin our emergency planning. We have been told by the county that no action can take place on that site, no chemicals can take place or be on that site until those EPA plans are approved and submitted over to the county. But once they are, we will work with the emergency management to address any site-specific safety measures that may be needed. This is actually in line with our process for the district. Every time we open a school, we do have to do emergency planning. Obviously, we've done this, you know, for the Catawba Ridge, sorry, the Catawba Nuclear Site, as well as natural disasters, we have emergency planning that goes in place for just what we saw last week, should we had issues that some of the other surrounding areas did. We've done this before, just so you guys are aware, and you probably may be aware if you've been in the district for a while, the district has done similar site-specific considerations. We're addressed at the openings of Nation Ford High School, that you mentioned earlier, due to the rail line that was there, in case there ever was a derailment. And I'll be honest with you, because of past incidents, that's actually spread to district-wide. We now have plans in place to handle district-wide derailments. And then also, at Banks Trail Middle School, there was a unique situation there because of the U.S. Foods Plant that is nearby, should there be an accident or incident there that could cause a health and safety risk, we have plans in place for that as well, too. So, again, this is a process the district is very familiar with, and will, you know, be working on immediately once we receive whatever is submitted through the EPA, and then ultimately to the emergency management on that side as well, too. And then, once we have those finalized plans, and obviously, the legal processes take their full course, and we know we have all the information, we'll be able to provide any additional information, should it be necessary, you know, to ensure that we're providing all the safety information for our sites, as well as, you know, being transparent in all of that. So, that's where we're at with the situation now, just want to give you that update, and I will turn it over to Mr. Britton for him to go through the whole site for you guys so you can see what it looks like.
All right. There you go.
Thank you, and good evening. It's great to be here, and I...
Thank you, and, and good evening. It's great to be here, and I appreciate you allowing me to give a construction update for Flint Hill and Flint Hill Elementary and Middle. I'm still getting used to the name. We're, we've been calling it Elementary 12.
Right, for a long time, yeah.
For so long. So, pardon me if I, if I regress a little bit. Believe it or not, we've been on site. We started pushing trees about 13 months ago. And where we are now, we started building, going vertical, we say, about 12 months ago. We are now finished with all the exterior and interior masonry, which is a great thing, to get those lulls and that activity off the site. Structural steel and decking is complete. We're multi-story on this building, so it's good to be able to get spaces to finish. Moving into that, roofing is about 75% complete. And we're thinking drying is, is scheduled for about a month out. We've got about 20% of windows in. We should, next month, should get the majority of them. The key about drying milestone is that you're about four to six months away from finishing. If you do the back math, it takes us to around June, or late May, early June, which is kind of reinforces that we're a little ahead of schedule. So, that's a, that's a great thing for us. Kind of brief, but to the point. I do have some photos, and I'm gonna try to get to that. So, Flint Hill Development Budget, Construction Budget, substantial completion is, is June 25th. So, we are really moving towards that date pretty quickly. It's a large site, as far as earth, close to a little over 600,000 yards of cut fill, which is one of the larger sites that we've done in the district. Matter of fact, one of the largest ones we've done. I've only done one larger in my whole career. And what we got here is kind of a, taking you through when we, early construction through today, to see it kinda grow out of the ground. And they're mostly from the same elevation, or same perspective, I should say. February, then April, June, August. So you're really seeing that building kinda come together. And then, we're putting roof on it, which is a great thing, especially with the weather we've had. Incidentally, lots of weather we've had, I understand, is that. But we've had three, more than 100-year events, probably less than 1,000-year events over the last, since we've been on the site. And everybody on that team has done a great job of maintaining the erosion and not blowing out. And it's hard to manage when you get that amount of precipitation.
But, but no damage that's been done?
Don't say that.
To the facility so far?
Not yet. Yes. And we are, we are, it's, it's, it's very important, because we do have weapons there, but it's very important that we manage. And, and it's been, it's, it's been a high priority for everybody on the team. And inside, believe it or not, we're actually starting, finishing, painting, ceiling grid. This is cafeteria and gym. Two different perspectives. Music room, we're putting ceiling grid in and paint. Lot of admin. The, the mizing walls in between the classrooms are metal studs and high-impact sheet rock, which allows us to build quicker and less expensive. So you'll see some metal stud. And if there's any, any questions for Flint Hill Elementary? So, Flint Hill Middle, not a whole lot to talk about. Again, as part of that site, we, we are getting close to being ready to start foundations. We are kinda what we'd call fast-tracking. We're releasing this in multiple packages. We're doing a foundation steel and masonry package. That's actually just was advertised. And then we'll be moving in about a month, we'll be doing a, the, the rest of the building, balance of the building. That allows us to finish the design, get through the AHJ, which is OSF, and while we, we're actually moving forward with the, with the design, with the, the construction. This building is around 190,000 square feet. It's not a small building. Typically, the, you know, this is gonna have a larger capacity than the other middle schools. It's about 30,000 feet larger than the Forest Creek that we just saw, which was a great presentation, by the way. But we, we've, we're moving forward. We've, we've committed to the site work component. We've had some issues with the balancing of that site, so we've had to rebalance to, so that we're not moving soil on or off. It's always very important, trying to leave it on site. And we, we had a little bit more than we anticipated, so we were raising some grades in the football field and around. So, that was, that was a figure-outable to, to get that finished. So, everything, we're, we're, the, the biggest last piece is just the off-site road improvements. We are, it's designed, it's been bid. We are working through some, some right away. And we're hopeful to have that underway pretty quickly, so.
So, the off-site road improvements that you mentioned, I, I was gonna ask, and I don't know if it's a question for you or for Mr. Rominick, I've noticed the intersection, what, what appear to be intersection changes for the, the end, I guess it would be this, the north's end of Gold Hill and 21. Is that our work, or is that part of the road work that is scheduled to happen?
That is Pennies.
That's what I thought.
It is Pennies. They're on that side. We're on this side.
Okay. So, on the, in that location, that is a Pennies project that will do something with that current intersection that's kinda funky right now, yes?
Yep.
Do we know?
And Jay, you probably can explain best, because you've been working with the county.
Yes, 24 is going to be realigning that. And during our design, we were coordinating with them. However, they have been delayed in their funding.
Okay.
And we have made alternate plans to realign and straighten out with the existing Gold Hill Road, to make sure that we can open the middle school and not be contingent.
Regardless of where they stand. So that, so that is something that we are having to do then, down at that end of the?
No, we were just tying in and coordinating with their, they are going to realign it.
Right.
And that is-
We're just connecting to where that road's gonna be?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, we're in the way with the, the typical road improvements that are in front of us.
Right, yeah. I mean, I see all the, the, what, what's it called? Stacking space and curbs and all that kinda stuff, right? Okay.
And this is a little more off-site than we've typically done before.
Okay.
With these type of improvements. But we're, we're moving forward, pushing, and it's a high priority for us to move forward.
Okay.
The major road work is gonna be on this side, though. And Jay, if you wanna explain some of the things that are gonna happen here with turn lanes?
Okay.
Yes. So, the major off-site improvements that we've gotta do based off of the TIA are gonna be here at the SC 460 Deerfield and Gold Hill intersection.
Okay.
Closer to the Gold Hill Road and I-77 interchange.
Okay.
We're gonna be adding additional left-hand turn lanes coming from the interstate to get on the Gold Hill Road, as well as receiving lanes on Gold Hill leading towards the, leading towards the school, to help the traffic flow and not bog down that intersection.
Will that involve an expansion of that bridge that's down there? No, doesn't go that far.
Through negotiations with SCDOT, we were able to limit our additional lanes short of that bridge, so we don't have to touch it.
Okay, good.
That was important.
Yes, I can imagine.
But there are tonner utilities between-
There is a spider web of utilities that we're doing.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks, y'all. Anything else, or any questions for those guys? Okay. And then, our next item is our consultant from Cropper GIS, that's gonna come up and talk to us about some process and suggestions on how we realign all the 8,000 students or so into an elementary, and same thing with middle school. So, Matthew Cropper, the floor is yours.
Chair Spears, members of the board, Dr. Epps, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here to, to deliver our recommendations for boundary changes to incorporate the new Flint Hill Elementary and Middle School. So, a little bit, before we get into that, just a little bit of who we are. We are Cropper GIS Consulting. We are a K-12 planning firm that specializes in just this type of work. We do redistricting study work all over the United States. We've done a lot of work in this area. We do work all the way as far west as Montana, worked with 2,000 to over 200,000 students, and a lot of districts in the state, and in the, in the region. And we bring to the table a lot of expertise in how other communities have faced challenges, and, and as it relates to this kinda work. And, and also, we have the expertise in the technology and mapping, and so we can, we can make accurate estimates as we move boundary lines and things like that. We, we really rely on good data and information to make accurate estimates, so that the numbers come in as we have anticipated. I am Matthew Cropper. I have over 25 years' experience in doing this. Like I said, doing work all over the United States. Also do work at the federal level with the U.S. Department of Justice, and honored to be working with you on this, on this particular project. So, as you all know, a new Flint Hill Elementary is opening in 2025, '26 school year. And then Flint Hill Middle School is opening the following year in '26, '27. These are being built to alleviate overcrowding, and also anticipating future growth, and to be proactive in that regard. So we are, our objectives in coming in here and doing this work is to establish attendance boundaries for the new schools, elementary and middle school, and balance utilization across all schools in the district once, as we, as we populate the new schools. We're also being proactive. We've looked at enrollment projection data that the district's had, has had done, and, and making sure that, that we're not only planning for what's, what's now, what's here now, but planning for what's here to come in the future. And then also, we're looking at aligning feeder boundary, feeder school boundaries. So that's looking at the progression of an elementary to middle school, and making sure that there's a balanced split as possible, as elementary schools progress to middle school, and trying to make sure that that, that it's good to have a balanced split, if you can't have 100% of an elementary feed into a middle school. So that's something else that we were, that we were looking at. So, we'd always follow a set of rules when we, when we look at boundary changes and redistricting. And these are basically the rules to follow. If we start moving a line one way or the other, we always ask ourselves, are we getting better to adhering to these criteria as, as a whole, as possible? It's important to look at these all as a whole, and, and, and look at them all and consider all of them, because if you focus only on one of these criteria, you start to deviate away from others. And so these are efficient use of capacity in all affected schools, maintain the continuity of neighborhoods, so try not to draw the lines down residential streets. If a community has to move to a school, they move together, and not, not draw the line down the middle of residential neighborhoods and things like that. Be mindful of the impact on transportation and pedestrian patterns. So, how far are students traveling now, and how far would they travel in any particular option? And, and so that's something to be mindful of, if at all possible. Minimize the number of times any individual student is reassigned to another school. And be mindful of long-term enrollment and capacity trends, and those feeder school boundaries, like I mentioned. And then, as we draw lines, it's, it's best practice to use geographic features such as roads and, and railroads and water bodies and things like that, that, that align with, with best practices. And it also helps to have a zone that is, is efficient, so that you can verbally describe it, and as, as, as you, as you explain how the zone is shaped and things like that. So, when we started the process, we collected information on current enrollment, the, the current and planned school capacity, enrollment projection information, your boundaries. And we got a lot of data from the county, addresses and property lines and things like that, ensuring that we draw the lines along property, backs of property lines, and not through the middle of property areas and things like that. So that's definitive on where you will be assigned to school in this plan. We took all this information, put it into our mapping system, so that we can make accurate maps and accurate assessments of how many students would be impacted if we moved a line one way or the other. So these are your current attendance, attendance boundaries. And as you could see, Flint Hill is elementary and middle school are located up here into, in the Springfield area, sort of the northern part. And so our objective is to build a zone for these two schools in the, in the north. And as you could see, I'm gonna move this out here, so the mouse isn't there. As you could see, as, in, in developing a zone for Flint Hill Elementary and Middle School, it has what we call a domino effect. And you have to build a zone for the new schools, but then, in doing that, you, 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 you take a lot of enrollment out of other buildings that you're taking away from. And so you have to sort of shift population subsequently from school to school in order to balance that utilization. So in order to do that, there are other boundaries in other areas were affected as part of this, in addition to the, to the zones that the schools fall within. These are your current middle school boundaries. And again, you could see the middle school, Flint Hill Middle School up in the north, up in the, in the Springfield Zone, which our objective was to establish a zone for that as well. So, looking again at current data, these are the, the enrollment statistics and things that we were working with to see. And we do a color scale, and we always study things as it relates to the district averages. And so everything, you see the green, yellow, and red. And everything that's shown in green is within 10% of the, of the whole average of the, of the total utilization for the district. And everything that's yellow is in between high or low 10 to 15%. And then red are shown, schools that are above or below 15% from the study area average. And this helps us kind of identify where there may be imbalances, and where there may be over or underutilization, and how, and, and, and when we get to our recommendations, how, how we can address that and, and resolve some of those imbalances. Current school feeder patterns, you could see, this shows you the elementary to middle school, and what percentage of the elementary feeds into middle school. You'll see, if you see two different, a school, elementary school named twice, that means it's split to two different middle schools, for example, Gold Hill. And then you have middle to high school, and you could see the, the feeder patterns that, that currently exist for your schools. Moving along, this, these are the recommended attendance boundaries for elementary schools, for Flint Hill Elementary. As you could see, it's the tan, the light, the light tan in the top part of the, of the map. Most of the elementary school is drawn from Springfield, but it also pulls from Pleasant Knoll, as well as Sugar Creek Elementary Schools. And, and that is the base for the Flint Hill Elementary School population. And then, and then in doing that, like I mentioned with the domino effect, there are subsequent shifts in, in, in boundaries, in order to balance utilization across other, other buildings in the, in attendance zones in the district. We made all efforts, if at all possible, to minimize the impact and move as few students as possible in doing this. But there were a number of students that, that had to move in order to accomplish our objectives. The middle school zone follows, very similar to the elementary schools, and all of Flint Hill Elementary feeds into Flint Hill Middle School in this map. And this does draw from a Pleasant Knoll, a middle school and Springfield middle schools, in order to populate Flint Hill. And there were subsequent changes that you could see kind of a domino effect. If you look at this map, you can see the background color is the recommendation, and then the black outline shows the current middle school lines. So you can kinda see the areas that were moved in order to, in order to balance enrollment and, and populate the new schools. We do have an online interactive map that's live now. It's croppermap.com/fort.mill. And this is a good, good site. You have a very large county to work with. And so this, lets, lets the user pull this up. You can zoom in, and as you zoom in on the map, more detail starts to show. You see property lines and other information. You can turn on and off the different layers. And you'll notice, if you're using a phone, sometimes the, there's a, there's a layer list on the left. It'll be hidden on your phone. So make sure, if you're using it on a phone, you wanna click on the little arrow on the left center of your screen, and it'll expand a layer list. And you can toggle on and off the current boundaries and the recommended boundaries, and kinda really get an understanding of, of, if, how any area in the district is impacted, if at all. There's also, you can click on the map and see if any area is impacted. And you'll see a red notification that says this, this address or this area has been impacted by the redistricting recommendation. And if, and if it's in green, it means that the area was not impacted by the redistricting recommendation. And so I, this has been a very useful tool for, for communities in other places that we've worked. And I'm sure that it'll be something that, that your community finds useful to, to get a better understanding of how they may or may not be impacted with these recommendations. And then, just some enrollment estimates. You could see, as, with the recommendation that's shown on the far right, the new elementary school had 900, estimated 921 students enrolled. And the middle school have 618 at the new middle school estimated enrolled. And everything else is in, is relatively balanced. We did, we were, make, take measures in looking at areas that have high-growth potential, and giving them some more space, so that they could grow in to an effective, to utilize- and giving them some more space so that they could grow in to an effective utilization that's comparable to the other schools. And so, this shows you just the resulting estimated enrollments for the buildings as a result of the boundary changes that are being recommended. Feeder patterns, it was a challenge to balance feeder patterns if at all possible. We don't have any three-way splits. So, there are, all schools are either 100% or split two ways into a middle school. And we tried to make those splits as balanced as possible. And so, you could see that there are more splits because of the new schools that come online. And in trying to resolve some of the smaller splits resulted in other problems and challenges with the other criteria as it relates to utilization, over- or underutilizing a building and things like that. So, these are the resulting feeder patterns for the schools per this recommendation. It's estimating, we're estimating about 1,466 students at the elementary level will be moved or impacted as a result of this recommendation and 1,272 middle schoolers. You could see, the detailed charts below that show you where students are moving from and to. Everything that's green are students who are not moved. And everything that's in the tan colors are students that are moved. So, you could see from Gold Hill to Pleasant Knoll, 142 students were moved and so on and so forth. So, you could see there were students that were sent to some schools and other schools received some to balance everything out. But this gives you an idea of where the students were moved that were impacted as part of the recommendation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Burke has some things to talk about with next steps for you guys.
Can I go back a couple of screens?
Yeah, sure.
While you're doing that, let me ask some just generic questions about the process. So, just to clarify, this is a consistent process with what we've done in the past. I know, Mr. Cropper, we haven't worked with you in the past. We've had more of a local consultant that did something similar, but very consistent process with having someone outside who has the expertise in this provide the information to us. I believe that one of the things that you tried to do was to resolve the, it was on one of the screens you showed a second ago with, you know, I'll use Gold Hill as the example because you did. We also have some freezes. So, in addition to populating the new school, we had areas that were known overcrowding, even though it may not have looked that way on the charts because the charts are based on school capacity. You know, that assumes every classroom's got 25 kids in it. And we know that we have a lot of special services classrooms and things like that that we really couldn't have 900 kids in a school. So, while it may not have looked overcrowded, you know, on some of the charts, we had those schools frozen for a reason, and this has taken all that into account as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. The capacity numbers are often, sometimes can refer to as design capacities. They may be higher numbers. When you start looking at a functional capacity number for a building and the programming that's offered in the building, that does reduce the number of students that adequately, the building could adequately hold. And so, that is definitely something that was taken into consideration and factored in as we did our work.
But the calculations themselves are still based on the building capacity, which we would never want to, we would never want to see in a school.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Michelle, you had questions?
No, I just wanted to see this again because I don't have it anywhere else.
Okay.
So, I'm good with that.
Any other general questions about the process or discussion before we get into next steps? What happens?
Not so much about the process or anything. We had, I'm just curious on something. We had a, we had a community member request a Freedom of Information Act some months ago about this. I have a question. Did we use the traffic study? And I only say that because the, what came back on that, on that FOIA request was a good model of that. It was actually a little bit bigger than what came back on that FOIA request. Did we use, did we use that?
We didn't use, I did not use the traffic study per se, but we, in doing, developing the options and working with the options, we had a lot of input from the district in terms of areas that where there's congestion and high-traffic areas and things like that. And so, we did get input regarding traffic congestion and where that occurs. And so, that it was taken into account and considered, but it was not, but we did not use the traffic study per se in specific.
The document, I think that you're asking about, it's my understanding was created by DOT. I don't, as far as being able to align how many turning lanes and things like that are needed, right?
Yeah, I fulfilled that document. That was related to the construction site and stuff that.
Oh, the county, sorry, not DOT.
It wasn't DOT, but yeah, that's related to the construction work that has to be done. That's obviously where a lot of the upgrades and things that Jay and them spoke about tonight came from. But that was a traffic study that was not part of this particular thing that we filled in the FOIA. That was related to the construction. There was two that came in. One was related to the attendance lines, the other was related to the construction of the area. So, but yeah, when I submitted the FOIA, it did have the one that was created for the construction of the site.
I was looking, I was just looking for clarification there. Thank you so much.
No problem. Any other questions?
Everybody's too busy looking at their, at their address.
While they're looking, I'll share some of the next steps we have too. So, now that we have Mr. Cropper's report, we've got a couple of things that are in process beginning tomorrow. By tomorrow afternoon, there will be a new page on our district website that's going to contain all of this information as well as a link to his interactive map. I saw a lot of people tonight taking pictures with their phones. Don't worry, we have PDF versions of the ones you saw tonight as well as we'll have links to the interactive map. Those are going to be, like I said, posted by the end of the day tomorrow. Should be earlier than that, but just to be safe. That will be up. The district will now be asking for feedback from the community between now and our next board meeting, which is the October 15th board meeting. And that feedback has been very important in the past. To be honest with you, we've done this in the past and we had these maps laid out and then we realized the road on the map shows it comes out in one place and it doesn't actually come out there in real life. So, we are asking for the feedback from the community. Take a look at these maps. Let us know if you see any issues or obviously any concerns. And that feedback can be submitted through to our communications@formalschools.org email address. That will also be on the website where you can just click on it and send us an email. But we will take that feedback between now and the next board meeting as well as Mr. Cropper's recommendation. The district will develop a recommendation that we will bring back to the board on October 15th. That night will just be presented as information. There is no voting asked for that night. We will come back and present that recommendation to you then. We'll take additional feedback from that between that and our next board meeting in November. We will finalize the plans and bring that back to you in early November to be able to ask you to vote on the actual attendance lines for both schools. So, that's kind of the process moving forward. We take our time with this. It's a very deliberate process to make sure that we try to reach the best accommodations possible to populate the schools and don't have any issues that are unforeseen.
Out of curiosity, as far as feedback goes, you will be, I assume, accepting feedback from the entire community or the parent base?
Anybody that wants to click that email address can submit feedback to us. That is the plan.
And it's open-ended feedback? It doesn't clarify whether someone is a parent of this or a parent of that or whatever?
No, it's not a questionnaire. We have kept it as open-ended where people can email and they can put any comments or anything they want to be in there. My office will collect all of those. We'll, the administration will work through them and collate them, kind of put them together, which ones maybe have similar issues or, and then the ones that have identified things we never even heard of, will be able to put together and share with Dr. Epps and obviously the district administration to create any changes that may need to be needed moving forward at 15th meeting. And then, repeat it again between the 15th and the November meeting.
Okay.
Is it possible for us to have a map available the night of the 15th to look at or just a visual of it? And maybe it's something that we can, you can do on the interactive map. But I think it would be interesting to see all of Fort Mill as one color with our schools highlighted where they sit. Because I think the unique challenge for the public to understand really here is, and just being familiar with the area of Sugar Creek and Springfield Elementary School and where this new school sits, that is the unique challenge is because those three schools sit so closely together, you have to draw from a much wider area in order to populate them. So, I think if we were to see sort of an overlay of just all one color as a district and highlight where our schools are, it's going to be visually easier to see the challenge of how we have to pull from, why our pie doesn't look like it's cut in even slices.
Yeah, I think that's something we could certainly create graphically.
Right. I think it helps sort of paint, tell the story of the challenge that we face when we have, when we do have locations and we've got to take the locations when they're available.
I was going to say, that's the other piece.
Purchasing. But I think it would be helpful for our public to see sort of the overlay and the challenge that we have when we have three elementary schools that we're pulling from that are so closely.
I think another thing to keep in mind as you're talking about that, this is something that I think goes overlooked here because everybody's just used to it, but having come from other districts, 52 square miles is not a very big area. Everything is close to everything.
Smallest geographic district in the state.
Love the Greenway, but that takes out 2100.
Right. So, it looks like a big area, but there's no kids that live in that big area.
We can work with Mr. Cropper or we can create it individually. Like I said, we can either do it in print or we can do it visually on the screens. Either or, it would be optional.
Joe, you were probably already going to do this, but could you just make, definitely let people know that there is no, no vote like on, I've already heard that multiple times today.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, but that's part of the reason why I wanted to give that timeline to you guys. That is the timeline. Like I said, the district administration is going to bring a recommendation back on the 15th. There is no vote that night. There couldn't even be a vote that night because we have to bring it in for first reading. So, it would be the first time presentation as a district's administration, a district recommendation. And then, after that, at the following of the November meeting would be the earliest time there would be a vote. And I think that is the plan at the timeframe. Obviously, anything can happen, but that is the plan is that that first November meeting would be the vote.
And Joe brings up a good point. Not only is there not a vote from the board, but we are not, from what I ask about the feedback, that it's sort of open-ended, there's not a, it's not a vote. Do you like it? Do you not like it? Is it, is it an A or a B or whatever?
We're looking for feedback on things that people may see as issues with the maps or other concerns or those kinds of things. We are not asking for a vote on this one. We're going to take that feedback and obviously, like I said, take what Mr. Cropper has. And we're going to look and see where there might be tweaks or things that need to be worked through. And from that, we will bring that recommendation back. And then, again, after that, we'll put it back out for feedback one more time going between that 15th meeting and the next one. So, you know, that is the goal is to, again, get as much feedback in as we can, but also looking at making the tweaks that are needed in between.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you very much. Long awaited, so it's exciting to kind of try and drill into the map and see where everything is now. We have a couple of action items that we need to approve tonight, starting with the district's cell phone policy with Mr. Young.
This is not near as much fun. This is the second reading of Policy J I C J, Prohibition of Personal Electronic Devices During the School Day. We presented this a couple of weeks ago with the first reading. It's basically stating that all electronic communication devices by students are prohibited from bell to bell. This includes cell phones, anything, any device, smartwatches that can access the internet or Wi-Fi or capture video or pictures.
And this is driven by the State Department of Education and the state superintendent?
Correct. This is a state proviso that was with the proviso 1.103 that was with the.
Attached to the budget.
Attached to the budget, yep. There are some exceptions as we discussed a couple of weeks ago. Students, you know, with IEPs, medical plans, 504 plans, if it's in those. Also, if you're a member of a firefighting organization or an emergency EMT organization.
And we've had a process or in the process of collecting those as needed and establishing whatever that mechanism is.
And we've been doing this since the first day of.
Beginning of school, right. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to approve Policy J I C J as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Policy J I C J as presented. Is there any discussion? I just want to make a comment about, I don't remember if we talked about this two weeks ago or not, but I think it's worth saying again. Shortly after we discussed this, I know there was an unfortunate accident that occurred elsewhere in the country, but the access that students, we're not taking phones away from students or watches away from students per se. They're in a backpack, they're in a locker, they're somewhere. But in the event of an emergency, they would be able to get access to those.
Correct. They do keep their phones with them during the day. They just have to be turned off and put away. We do have some teachers, I think at the high school level, that do ask them to.
Drop it in the basket or something?
Some type of, you know, shelf or basket, but they have access to it within the classroom if they need it. If something like that were to happen, they would be able to get those cell phones.
Okay. I'd just like to say, we sort of brought this topic up a little bit in the teacher forum event yesterday. And the feedback was positive of how we've been working on it. Obviously, there's some challenges that they're still working through, but, you know, we've got to commend our building-level administrators and the teachers for really stepping up and putting a good plan in place to make this happen, so.
Absolutely.
Students are actually talking to each other at lunchtime.
Yep, they are.
Shocking.
And I will just say that, you know, I remember when, you know, right before school started, this all came out and we were like, oh, God, what are we going to do? This is a huge change. But not only have our administrators and our teachers adapted, but our kids have really done a great job of adapting, not having them.
I've had a few students that I know and have seen recently and that's been their exact words.
Yep.
Oh, Ms. Branding, this is amazing because we don't have all of the other nonsense that we used to have.
Sure.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
And we have another one, though, an approval of some overnight field trips with Dr. Wake's Ness.
Good evening. I guess this is the reason for the large turnout, to hear about the field trips.
Yes.
So, thank you, everyone in the audience for being here. But tonight, I have four field trips to present that require board approval because they are more than three school days in length. So, you have a memo in your board packet. The first one is a trip for Catawba Ridge High School, the FFA, Future Farmers of America, to participate in their National CTE Convention in Indianapolis. The second one is a trip request from Fort Mill High School from the student news TV program, The Buzz, to travel to Florida for their national network convention. And then, there's two middle school trips. The next one is Banks Trail. They are, they would like to go to Orlando where they will participate in a fine arts workshop for art band and chorus students. And finally, a trip for Forest Creek Middle School to Washington, DC for the eighth grade to experience our nation's capital. So, I'm bringing those four trips for your approval this evening.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation to approve the four field trip requests as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these four field trips as presented. Is there any discussion?
I'm assuming that the eighth-grade trip that's in early to mid-May is, that all testing's completed by that time?
Yes.
No, yeah, not during. I just wanted to ask. I assumed, but.
Yeah, we know how that breaks down.
And certainly, these all are consistent with field trips that are taken generally every year by these groups. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we are on to hearing from our fearless leader, Dr. Epps. Talk to us about the superintendent's report.
Real reason everybody came.
Yeah.
Okay, looking at the calendar and y'all can help me add dates if I leave something out. Of course, the school board meeting tonight, school board visits on Monday, like Christine mentioned, we'll start at River Trail, go to Catawba Ridge, Forest Creek, Middle. And I think the extended time, I think the board pretty much liked that extra time, so.
Yep.
Nice.
The trips are, visits are a little more meaningful. The school board candidate forum hosted by the Fort Mill School District Teacher Forum on the 9th of October at Catawba Ridge High School at 6:00 PM. The 11th, no school for students and staff, potential weather makeup day. The 14th is a teacher work day, no school for students and staff. Then, the school board meeting on the 15th that Joe mentioned and both Joes mentioned here back in the training center. November 1 is an early release day. Number 5 is election day, no school for students and staff. We do have a school board meeting that night at 5:00. That's election night, as I said. The December, the November visits for school to Fort Mill Elementary, Fort Mill Middle, Dobie's Bridge on the 12th. And then, tentative meeting of the school board on the 19th. And then, the Thanksgiving break, the 27th through the 29th, I think that's the Wednesday through the Friday. Any other dates that I failed to mention?
Just want to highlight something really quick, that the school board meeting on on election day, it starts at 5:00 PM, so not the regular 6. It's, it's on there, but.
Yep.
You're right. Old habits die young.
Michelle, did you have something else?
Yeah. October 10th is Beyond the Basics in Columbia with SCSBA. That is a sign up. You have to be registered to participate. Our own Ms. Lordo will be presenting a training session during one portion of that. And also then for Skisbit, the insurance trust, October 23rd. And I don't know how far that goes because I don't, I deleted some things off my calendar. But Risky Business Conference is in Hilton Head, I think, the October 23rd. I think that's it. In my notes.
Okay, moving on to enrollment. As we did last month, we grew by 23. I think we're in that mode now where we're going to grow by chunks of students each month as, as opposed to growing during the summer. Hopefully, if interest rates come down and the house sales pick up, we'll start growing again in the summer. I don't know the hope for the growth, but at least it'll be spread out a little better. Any questions about the enrollment? And that's it. We still having some, Donna, we're still having some, where's Donna?
Over there in the corner. Yep.
We're still having some trouble with the software talking to each other on the teacher report. Okay. Well, we're going to get smart and figure it out.
Right.
Thank you. That's it for me.
The only thing I will add is, you may have said it, but the, the candidate forum on the 9th is going to be livestreamed. So while it's, it's at Catawba Ridge High School, it will be available for anyone in the community to watch, like many are probably doing right now.
You can eat supper and watch the candidate forum.
That's right.